I'd like to call the meeting of the, special meeting of the operations board. So, welcome and roll call please.
Mr. Palacios. Mr. Bernal.
Mark Dedel for Mr. Bernal.
Mr. Montoya.
Matt Huffaker for Mr. Montoya.
Mr. Goldstein. Mr. Baumann.
President.
Mr. Corpus. Mr. McCarthy.
Actually, it's Ben Harvey holds the seat for the Peninsula Cities, not Mike McCarthy.
Okay, I was gonna call you next. Mr. Harvey?
President.
Mr. Long?
President.
Mr. Espinoza?
President.
Chairman Dez?
Present.
Is there anyone I missed?
Okay, great. Thank you. Any consideration or late additions, deletions to the consent and our regular agenda?
We don't have any additions or deletions at this time. I do want to make a note that the projector screen is not working, so just as a note to the public, that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Oral communication items not on the agenda. Great, hearing on. Consent agenda. Motion for the consent agenda?
Move approval?
Is it moved in second?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, thank you. Regular agenda, CEOs report. Mr. Bush.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Few things to report on today. One is the banking and credit arrangements. The money is now in. We have two different line of credits. One for $3 million that we will be able to use in order to get all the way to the start of the line, so to speak, comes March 1st when we begin serving. And the other one is held only to deal with power supply issues, reserves, and to also address any, any negative cash flow that we will have in the first couple of months of operation. But the money now is in our bank account. Staffing update, I'm gonna ask Sean to give you guys an update on that one.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'll try again. We've been moving ahead expeditiously with the postings for the positions that you all approved at your meeting back in September. There are nine positions that have been posted to date. As you can see, four, and now I just confirmed this morning, five positions have been accepted. It is the plan to have those staff members start on December 1, unless other arrangements are made, and there are a few other arrangements, but we are pressing ahead with the open positions and will be posting additional positions in the coming months to make sure that we are staffed up and ready to go. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions for staff?
Thank you.
Next, we're gonna update you on short and long-term contracts. As you may recall, we have been out with an RFO for short-term supplies that will range for up to five years, starting 2018 going to 2022, for conventional energy as well as attributes that will bring that, that will bring our supply or source to 100% carbon-free. We have received a number of offers, and we are now negotiating with a scheduling coordinator, which is a separate function. This is gonna be the entity that will be between us and all the other suppliers that will be providing us with power. They will keep the account of what's coming in, what's going, eventually being scheduled into the California SO, and will keep tab on all the money that needs to be exchanged and the balancing that needs to happen with the California. So, that contract is nearly done. We're probably about a couple of weeks away from having it complete, and we'll be, we will be bringing it to you for approval, hopefully in December. We also received a number of offers from suppliers, and we are in negotiations with, with all of them. Five of those contracts, I believe, are included in your packet, and we're gonna be discussing that later on. We are not likely to be able to get everything that we need to get for those five years as we required in the first round of, in the first round of acquisition. It will take us probably several months for us to complete or meet or cover all the, the open position that we have, but at least we will be able to start in November and go on probably in December and January to do additional buys to cover the short-term needs. For the long-term supplies, we received about 70 different offers. If you recall, we went out with a joint offer with Silicon Valley Clean Energy, looking for renewable resources that will cover somewhere between 50 to 700 gigawatt-hours, with the understanding that that will be about 10%. If we get that power, if we get up to 700 megawatt, we'll be able to cover 10% of our needs, as well as Silicon Valley will be covering another 10%. We've received 70 different offers, very attractive prices, and we've, from 30 different developers, we've narrowed the field down to four suppliers that we informed yesterday that they are on the short list. Two of those development will be solar plus, plus storage, and two are wind projects. To be more specific, the wind projects are 43 megawatts located in Alameda County, and 200 megawatt, that's a different project from a different supplier, located in New Mexico but connected to the California grid via transmission lines, so it's considered to be a type-one renewable. Two solar projects, both of them are in California and Kern County, as well as in King City, I mean Kings County, and they are somewhere between 115 to 150 megawatts in size. Both of them come with storage that will have capacity up to about 30% of the, of the solar capacity. In general, we, we think, we think the price is, is right, that we can probably buy a little bit more than what we had in mind going in. I remind you that we are required by Senate Bill 350 to make sure that 65% of our RPS renewable portfolio credits, 65% of that needs to be met by long-term agreements of 10 years or longer. And that's what prompted us to start thinking about going into long-term supplies now. As it turned out, it takes at least two to three years of those developers to put, and by the way, I'll back off a little bit, we need to have 60% of our RPS requirement met by long-term contracts by the year 2021, to be more specific. Now, if you do the calculations, that comes to about 22% of our total needs that will need to be met by long-term contracts comes 2021. We thought, again, working with Silicon Valley on this one, that if we do 10% now and another 10% or 12% next year, we're probably not gonna be able to bring in both by 2021, given that most of the projects that we are gonna be negotiating with will not be online until 2021. So, we figure probably we can bring in enough projects that will meet the entire 22% of our total load by long-term supplies, given the advantageous pricing that we have seen. The prices, pretty much for all of them, regardless of whether solar plus storage or wind, is south of $0.04 per kilowatt-hour, which is quite an attractive price. And that is primarily because all wind and solar supplies today are getting tax breaks on anything that they do, really attractive tax breaks, and that's why they are able to price their developments a little lower than what the market mandates if they don't have those tax breaks. In short, we've shortlisted the group down to four development. We will begin negotiations with all four of them simultaneously. To the extent that we will sign all four contracts with them at the prices that we, that were offered, or less, then we will be looking at, and again, if we split the projects between us and Silicon Valley Clean Energy on a 55% to 45%, they get 55, we get 45, and the reason for that is they're gonna grow a little bit more because they add in the city of Melpitas now, so their sizes now have gone a bit above us. So, we figured it out. If we do that split of 55-45, we will both end up with 22% of our prospective loads being met by these long-term contracts. With that, I'll, I'll stop and entertain any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the board or comments?
Thank you. Last, last is we've been asking you folks to see if we can put together a joint session with both boards. We've got that scheduled now for January 20th. And generally, what, we've been debating what to talk about, and I think the best thing to do is to kind of prepare in that session to the development of the strategic plan, our first strategic plan for, for Silicon Valley Clean Energy. I hope that you all be there, along with all of your alternates.
Any questions on the board? Comments? Mr. Goldstein?
I guess I have a question about the joint. Body is traditionally advisory body to the policy board, about bringing both together at the same time versus maybe having kind of a, or an operations workshop, if you will, with recommendations that get forwarded on to a policy workshop.
I, just to be clear, I don't view this body as an advisory. You do have decision-making authority, and many of the items that are coming to you lately, we asking for your approval, and we generally take it back to the policy board for information. But once you approve it, it's approved. That aside, I'm more than happy to have two different workshops if that's needed. But since we're gonna be talking about strategic planning, I thought, I thought that probably would be helpful for bringing everybody together. It's not that easy to try to have you folks for three, four hours, and to try to do that at two different times, maybe a little bit taxing on you as, as well as staff, to be fairly honest. So, to the extent that, that we, we can bring everybody together, that would be really helpful. We're not looking for decisions to be made during that workshop. We'll be just talking about ideas, what should go into the strategic plan, and just have everybody be there at the same time. But if you, if you folks feel that, that is not a good idea, and you'd just rather have a different workshop, I'm sure we can figure out a way to arrange it.
What is the topic? Because I actually do think it makes some sense. I get it as a more of a lift for staff and everybody to have to, a workshop with us and then a workshop with the policy board. I mean, ultimately, we're all city managers, county administrators, or whatever. We report to many members of the policy board, and we have to be respectful of that, and so I think it could lend to some awkwardness in the discussion. So, that's sort of my thought, but I don't know how the rest of the, the board feels.
I think we have separate swim lanes that we're in. I think if we look at it that way, we're charged with certain responsibilities that are different from the policy board. I think that should allow us to coexist. We're in awkward situations with our policymakers every day, aren't we?
Yeah, but it's your own. It's not. I don't get an awkward situation.
I don't mind being awkward with yours. It's fine.
Yeah.
I do think it's a good idea that we have, I think the joint meeting is an excellent idea.
Yeah, but I think it, it may be beneficial for us to have a pre-meeting, because this is a technical business. It's a highly technical business, and I think we can add some value looking at the technical aspects of a strategic planning, so that when we meet with the elected officials, we can give them our perspective rather than, than try to jointly consider these things, because we each have our own perspective, and the policy board obviously will be looking at the political implications and, and other factors that we may not look at as carefully. So, you know, I think maybe we could convert one of these meetings into a half-day and accommodate that.
Would it be helpful if we try in January, for example, during the meeting, the scheduled meeting, to, to bring in a discussion about strategic planning? Probably not for the entire half a day. Maybe we can make it a little shorter, then for the joint session, yeah, we can go the extra yard.
That work for the board? Great. Great. Thank you. Before we move on, any member of the public wishes to comment? Okay, hearing on. Can we move on to the next item? Authorization to execute PG&E service agreement and to submit payment to the CPUC.
Yes, we are, as you will know, anticipating to get, we are anticipating to get any time now, in the next couple of days, I'm hoping sooner than later, a certification from the CPUC that, in response to our implementation plan, that basically will, the CPC will say now that you are registered or certified to go ahead and engage in the business of, of buying supplies on the wholesale side and select retail. Until we get that, we're not in business. So, our anticipation, once we get that, right away, we immediately need to engage with PG&E. We need to sign a contract with them. The contract is not really a contract that we can negotiate with them. It's more of a service schedule that they have on the list of service schedules. We can sign it, or we can try to engage in negotiations with them, which they basically say, yeah, sure, if you want to. We may even make a change or two to it if, if you want, if you want us to. It will take a couple of months for that to happen, then we would have to submit it to the CPUC for approval. It takes them another six months for that to happen. So, you can delay it for eight months, or you can just sign it now and be done with it. Pretty much every CCA that's got into the business eventually end up signing that service agreement as-is. So, what we ask in, of you today is to authorize me to approve that agreement. Once we get the CPUC certification, I'll go ahead and, and process that agreement with Pacific Gas and Electric, and once they approve it, there will be a check that we're gonna need to make out to the CPUC worth $100,000 at this point. It may be a little higher than that. Once the CPUC concludes a, a proceeding that they are engaged in right now, that $100,000 is basically a guarantee that the CPUC will have, in case we decided to, at one point or another, during our existence, to get out of the business and turn all the customers over back to PG&E. The CPUC basically say, well, PG&E is gonna need to spend money in order to absorb all those customers back, and whether that to be money that they have to spend on, on administrative work, or to spend on additional power supply that they have to buy. We need a bond from you that's worth $100,000. We're gonna hold that bond for as long as you are in operation, and for as long as PG&E is the supplier of last resort. So, these are two actions that I'm asking of you to do today. One is authorize me to sign a contract with PG&E, and two, to send a check for $100,000 to the CPUC. And by concluding these two actions and receiving the implementation plan, we are for sure are in business.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? Mr. Goldstein?
So, you alluded to the fact that almost all the community CCA is out there to sign these service agreements with PG&E. Is there any flexibility in the language? I mean, I got the impression that there essentially was, was none, but maybe just talk to, talk to me a little bit about the fact, is this just the agreement that you have to sign with PG&E, or do we have any negotiating room here to let our legal team review it and make sure it's in our best interest and modify it if necessary?
Yeah, we, we can. If we want to, PG&E makes it very clear, their representative makes it very clear to me, and made it already clear to me when I was at Silicon Valley Clean Energy, that if we wanna negotiate this service agreement, we can. Matter of fact, I believe one entity, one CCA, did want to do that, and eventually they backed out when they realized that this is gonna delay them by about eight months. Now, keep in mind, you can't start operation until the service agreement is in place. The issue's not even the time that we spend negotiating with PG&E. The issue is that PG&E, once we're done with the negotiations, they have to resubmit that back to the CPUC and wait another six months for the CPUC to, to say, yeah, that looks good. So, can we do it? Yes. Do I wanna delay this work by another eight months? I don't think so.
Mr. Baumann?
Thank you, Chair. So, just clarification, with this step and any other steps, will we be immune, so to speak, from the legislation that was defeated that may be reintroduced next year regarding purchasing third-party power that would offset our ability to contract?
Yeah, the legislation was, basically said that if you don't have the certification by September 1, 2017, then the investment-owned utilities will buy a portion on your behalf of all these resources that are being made available, and you will get, you will get to pay the cost of that. And that's what we were objecting to. Obviously, if that legislation comes back in January or February with the same language, well, it's not gonna be September 1 anymore. It's gonna be January 1 or, you know, February 1. By then, we already got the certification, and we will be immune from that. The ones that won't be immune are the, all the other CCAs that are lined up over the next couple of years.
Thank you. Mr. Corpus?
Yes, is the annual, or is the implementation plan that CPUC is now gonna be approving, hopefully, is that an annual review? Is there some requirement that we have to report back annually to the CPUC on the implementation plan?
No, not on the implementation plan, per se, but there will be plenty of reporting that we would have to do on resource adequacy, on, on RPS requirements, renewable portfolio credits requirements, a number of other reporting that we will be doing for the CPUC, the CEC, CARB, and other agencies. But once the implementation plan is certified, it goes on the shelf, and we're done with it, and we do after that what we need to do.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing on, any member of the public wishes, wish to address this item? Okay, bringing it back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move the recommendation. Second.
Okay, we moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Thank, thank you. Going on to the next item. Approve the attached resolution authorized MPCP chief executive officer to execute Edison Electric Institute master agreements and confirmation agreements with the following power suppliers: Exelon, Morgan Stanley, PowerX, Shell Energy, and Tenaska.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've already mentioned that item earlier today. These are enabler agreements. Right now, there's nothing in these agreements that, that speaks of the amount of power we're gonna be buying from these folks, or the price for the power that we're gonna be buying. None of that stuff will be known until the day we are ready to actually execute contracts. This, but these are all the enabler agreements that allow us to, to pretty much transact with these five entities. We are still negotiating with three more entities for similar enabler agreements. There's another contract that's called Western, WSPP, Western System Power Pool, I believe, that we're also gonna need to have in place. That's a, a separate enabler agreement that many other Northwest utilities operate under. We'll have all those enabler agreements ready to go. Then, once we do get a couple more agreements in, then we'll be going out fairly quickly after that to see if we can solidify some of the prices that we got when we went out for RFO initially. We've got a whole lot of good prices, but all of them basically come in as indicative prices. They're not, and they do not support They're not, and they do not support them until the day we actually say, okay, we have all the enabling agreements done. Tomorrow probably, not tomorrow, assuming we get the CPUC certification today, tomorrow we'll be going out for repricing on some of the products, very little, and to see if we can bring in some good prices, get that taken care of. But there will be constant interaction between us and these five entities along with the ones that may be coming to you December 6th, over the next six months to kind of fill that open position that we have over the next few years. And with that, and I think we do need an approval of a resolution that the Chair needs to sign that will allow for the legal entity that we're working with to provide an opinion that all those suppliers require in order to be able to transact with us.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
What's the makeup of the power that you're negotiating? Is there any restriction on that?
Generally, we are out for four different products. There's the conventional energy, which is basically system energy that we buy from, from the ISO. What we ask for is the, a hedge price for that, for that energy based on the hourly consumption. So we have actually for over the next five years, 800, 8,760 hours of amount of energy that we need times five and have that all in a schedule that, that suppliers will be bidding on. Most likely, they will give us a single price for each year. Some of them will give us a single price for each quarter, for each three months. So that's one product. That is just to hedge the, the basic power that we need. Then after that, we have two different products that provide the attributes that will have that energy become 100% carbon-free. 30% of that energy will, we were asking for what we define as PCC1 or renewable energy type 1. This is basically energy that's produced from renewable resources or eligible renewable resources as defined by the state in California or could dynamically be scheduled into California. And the other 70%, we basically asking for designation of carbon-free or mostly it's going to be large hydro. That energy will be provided by large hydro. And these two products are, are indexed plus. Basically, the providers will say it's the ISO price, the ISO price plus a dollar or $2 or $15 or $16 depending on the product. Where basically what we pay him is the plus and the energy they move to, to the ISO market when they move it to the ISO market as they see fit. And these two different products. And the fourth product is something called resource adequacy. Basically, we, we bind capacity. We're buying the power behind all that energy that we're going to receive. And, and the resource, and the resource adequacy is just looking at the peak demand for every month, multiplying it by a factor of 1.15 and that makes the amount of capacity that we need to have, that we need to buy. And so we buy that as a backup just in case something happened that energy that we are bought did not get delivered for some reason, then the people that we bought the capacity from will be able to deliver the energy associated with that capacity. And that's another product that's required by, by the CPUC. We have to buy it and we have to report on it every month. So these are the four different products. We will be buying some of each with these five contracts. And if we transact tomorrow or the next week, we are likely to be looking at only the attributes plus the RA, not the bigger contract, which is going to be the conventional energy. The conventional energy, we have to create something called a lockbox with the bank. It will be a three-way agreement between us, the bank, as well as the suppliers. So the suppliers will be sure that they're going to get their money ahead of anybody else when they work with us. Those agreements still yet to be negotiated. We're a couple of weeks away from getting them done. And once we get them done, we're probably going to bring them to you December 7th or December 6th. And once we bring those agreements to you, then we'll be able to transact with everybody for the conventional part of that deal. I hope I didn't get too technical.
Mr. Bowman?
Thank you, Chair. So looking to the future, the, the tax exemptions for solar will be expiring and I haven't followed where the tariff is on the Chinese manufactured solar panels. So is green energy going to be more expensive in the coming decade? And if so, should we consider longer-term contracts given the current pricing?
The, the, the pressure is becoming a little higher to remove some of the incentives. One of them is the tariff, which is being considered now by the administration. This is a tariff that the administration will put on, on solar panels coming from China mainly and Southeast Asia. And that's going to be adding somewhere around 30, 40 cents per panel. Panels today is cost about 99 cents delivered. So it, it will obviously make it a little bit more expensive. Then there's the tax incentives. The tax incentives is really what's keeping those folks in business and making them have the price be as low as it is today. And that tax incentives is provided both on, on the wind and solar and solar plus storage. It has a reasonable tax incentive right now. All these incentives are likely to expire around the year 2020.
So to that end, does it not make sense for us to, to lock in as many long-term contracts as we can?
It, it does, but there's also the other side of the equation, which is how likely is it that the prices will keep coming down? Solar prices, for example, have come down almost 75% in, in the last 10 years. Batteries alone in, in a year and a half dropped considerably and likely to drop even further. I've seen reports that implies that solar prices are going to hover around a penny and a half, maybe about 10 years from now. Is that possible? I, I don't know. I don't know if we're going to be able to manufacture things that cheap, but it's best to kind of cost average things so you don't end up putting it all down figuring that, boy, it's just gotten to the point where, you know, it can't go any cheaper than the next thing you know is it's dropped by another 20%. I mean, a lot of the people that locked prices for solar, solar only without storage at six cents about three, four years ago, they thought that they were doing a heck of a deal because a few years before that, the prices were hovering around 12 cents a kilowatt-hour.
Any other questions or comments, Mr. Corpus?
Yes, so can you give a little more background on the average purchase price? You mentioned five cents per kilowatt hour. So how does that work with the four different energy possibilities, purchases?
I think combined, if we take the cost that we're going to pay for the energy plus what we pay for the attributes, whether that to be carbon-free or, or renewable, and the, the cost for the ISO expenses and any other associated expenses with the delivery of power, we are, there's a good likelihood, not good likelihood, a high likelihood that we're going to be under the five, the five cents. That's why I put that five cents in there just to allow us to transact without having to come back to you and say, oops, we, we missed up on a point one cent.
Good. Any other comments or questions? Mr. Goldstein?
So as best I understand this, what we're talking about now is sort of these master agreements then that will subsequently be implemented through final purchase price agreements. However, in these agreements, as I looked through the contract, there's a lot of language about default or early termination. And talk a little bit about how, how much this stage we're tied in, I guess, with this master agreement and how much flexibility we have, you know, in the event of something changing over, through your negotiations.
The whole idea really of having a master agreement and a confirmation agreement is to get all that out of the way, to deal with the events of default, to deal with all these issues, get them completely out of the way. It's no, it's no longer in the negotiation process. And that took, by the way, months of negotiations in, in a different agency. And a lot of what you see and hear is got rehashed a few times over by other CCA's. But once you, you get that done, once that's out of the way, the only thing now we talk to suppliers about with these suppliers right here is quantities and price and term. That's it. One year, two years at this price and, and this is the quantity we need. That's the only thing that we get to negotiate. And that, and that is obviously what we need to do because a lot of these agreements have to be solidified within two hours from the time the offer is made. And so when we get to the portion that, that does the, the conventional energy, we will go back to them and say, we need a refresher on the price. Here's the, here are the quantities again. They will give us the price, the refresher on the price by nine o'clock in the morning. By 11 o'clock in the morning, we, we scrambling over the phone to try to work the best set of deals that we can work with everybody. By 11 o'clock in the morning, we, we pretty much done. And from that point, just signature on confirmations are being passed back and forth. So we don't, there's no time anymore to go back and rehash credit issues. All that stuff has to be taken care of ahead of time.
So, so simply, this, this agreement basically lays out the framework for us to either buy or not buy, as the case may be, but leaves that decision up to us, but clears out all the other legalese necessary to either make that decision or not make that decision when the time comes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? I, I have one just because this is so foreign to me. You know, we negotiate back at our home places, a lot of different types of things, but what exactly are the leverages? What do we bring to the table? Money, time, how much we're willing to pay? I mean, when you, the negotiation applies, you know, at least two parties trying to come to some sort of agreement and implicitly there's some leverage points and some things that both parties bring to the table. So what sort of our, how do we negotiate the best deal? I mean, what do we bring to the table? I'm just...
You mean to, what do we bring to the supplier?
Yeah.
A market.
So, so the size of the market?
Yeah, no, actually, to be, the size of the market really helps when you, for, for long-term contracts, for the, these long-term contracts. The fact that we go jointly with, with Silicon Valley helped bring the price down roughly anywhere between, I would say, 5 to 10%. So that's for the long-term contracts. Short-term contracts are a little different. Actually, they offer, they offer the power in tranches and the, the first tranche is usually the least expensive, believe it or not. You would think that doesn't work that way, but for short-term arrangements, it gets more expensive as you, as, as the quantity goes up. And that's why I'm saying that we will be going out continuously, looking to close positions because we are not likely to buy everything that we need to buy for the next five years in one swoop because it does get more expensive as the quantity goes up. So we are likely to maybe hopefully lock anywhere between 70 to 80% of what we set out to, to do initially. Then we will continue to, over time, just go back and, and, and look to close the open position. And we'll get to know a lot more about that when we put a risk oversight committee together, when we begin to get into the buying mode and we actually have an office that we can meet at. So, and we'll learn a whole lot more about, you know, what are all the risks associated with the acquisitions that we do and how do we close this position or that position. But we bring the market to the, to the table, they bring in the resources and that's how you get a deal done.
Thank you. Any member of the public wishes to address this item? Okay, hearing none, I'd like to bring it back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
Moved in second by Mr. Wayne. Mr. Long. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. Moving on to the office item. Authorized, item number nine, authorized chief executive officer to finalize and execute an office lease agreement with AG Davi LTD for the lease of office located at 70 Garden Court, Monterey.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This, we, we have been negotiating with the owner of 70 Garden Court in Monterey for some time now and I think we've very, very close to having a lease done. We just need a couple of small changes that, that need to take place. It's a pretty decent office, very good price, but I'm told that I think that way because I came from a place where the prices were really considerably much higher for, for office lease. I think, and we build in a, in a way that we can have our board meetings over there. I think we, we will be able to move December 1st, I'm told. There's always sometimes glitches here or there, but December 1st is, is our moving day. And we're still probably going to take a couple more days to make sure that a couple of items that we needed the owner to agree to are taken care of. They have not agreed to it yet, but we will make sure that they do before I go ahead and sign the agreement. And with that, I would ask for your, for authorization to go ahead and sign the agreement when it is complete and, and ready to be approved.
Thank you. Any comments or questions for staff? Okay, hearing none, any member of the public wish to address the board on this item? Okay, bringing it back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to authorize CEO to enter to an agreement with AG Davi for a lease for the office.
Second.
Second by Mr. Corpus. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Good. So I think we're done. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much.